Okay, next order of business is a joint meeting with the Selco Commission and with representatives of the Advisory Board for Shrewsbury Media Connection. Mr. Hill, you have a brief presentation?
Yes.
Mr. Swyand, do you have a statement you'd like to make after that, and then we'll start the discussion? I want to caution everyone, this is not a public hearing. This is only a meeting between Selco and the Advisory Board. There's a public comment period, and we more than likely will be having a public hearing somewhere down the road, but that could be a month and a half away. So, the process tonight will be, Mr. Hill will present. If we have any questions we'll ask him, we'll have Mr. Swyand make a statement, and we're just going to have a discussion about what this means, what's in the proposed amendment, and just see what ideas come out of that. So, good evening, Ms. Hill.
Thank you. With me this evening are three members of the Selco Commission, Tony Trippi, Maria Lemieux, and Mike Raffolo. And if you would like, Mr. Swyand might want to introduce his Advisory Board members who are here.
Sure.
I have Dr. Mamrona Patil and Nick Tedesco.
Okay, welcome.
Thank you. As you recall, we met last in September, and I asked the Board to convene this meeting. I'd like to make a presentation before we get into the question and answer period. Just a little bit of a background on the issue. The Public Access Entity was formed shortly after the franchise was awarded to then Shrewsbury Electric Light Plant in 1983. Documents in 1985, correspondence between then General Manager of the Selco, or Shrewsbury Electric Light Plant, Jim Baker, and Bob Maroni, who was Chairman of the Board of Selectmen at the time, indicated that the Public Access Entity was intended to be formed as a nonprofit all along from its onset. An application for 501(c)(3) status was rejected by the IRS because Selco, at the time, desired to retain control over the public access employees and expenditures, and I believe to be primarily because, at the time, the operation was not operating profitably, and that it was at its early onset, and that there was some desire to control all expenses as best could be done. The nonprofit initiative was dropped in the late 1980s, and the Public Access Advisory Board, an arrangement between this group and Selco, started, and it has been in existence since that time in 1991, with loose oversight by the Selco Commission and myself. Fast forward to 2014, Selco conducted a strategic roadmap and hired a consultant, a five-year strategic plan. The consultant that was hired was CCG, out of Florida. It's a consulting firm that handles a lot of strategic planning for small cable operators like ours, and there were a number of findings in that report, one of which was that Selco spends more than any other client that they have on the public access function. That said, we did not target that as an immediate fix. There were other things that were far more important to us when we received that report in June of 2014, and we've picked away at a lot of the recommendations and implemented them, like changing our phone product, starting a commercial sales program, implementing a franchise fee, staying current with programming increases, and now we're addressing some of the other issues that were in the report. In September of 2015, we started a working group to study the issue. A member of the Board of Selectmen was invited, and we've been meeting since that time. The roadmap report was something we reviewed, the working group was formed in 2015, and then we hired Bill August, a noted cable attorney in Massachusetts, to assist us in this review. I think he was used by the town in the last franchise agreement, and he's also done some work for SMC. The Advisory Board weighed in once the draft documents were available for the input in the spring of 2016. So I guess the question is, why now? And really, it's to address the findings in the report, to really address the lack of formal administrative oversight of the agency. The overwhelming majority of public access entities are nonprofits. The next two points I'd like to cross is, cable operators are not really in the business of being free speech referees. A number of cable operators totally divorced themselves from handling the public access function because they did not want to get into overseeing disputes as to what free speech is and isn't. And cable operators should not be involved in programming channel placement decisions. That's been an issue in the last couple of years, as to what programs should be on what channel, and that's really not something that Selco or the Commission feels that it should be in the decision-making that would be better made by a nonprofit board like it is in the other systems around the state. So the question is, how does this happen? There are municipal employees now. How do they go from a municipally-run organization to one that's municipally-funded but run by a nonprofit? There's really three steps that need to occur. The first is, we need to amend the existing franchise agreement between the Board of Selectmen and the Commission. That's really what we're here for tonight, to discuss. The second two steps are that there needs to be a new agreement developed between the new nonprofit entity and the Board of Selectmen, as there is in every other community, or most every other community in the Commonwealth. And lastly, the new entity needs to create bylaws to which spell out its operating procedures. The focus tonight really is on the first item, only even though we have developed some working documents for the Board to review on the second two items with input from members of the Advisory Board. The franchise amendment process is governed by the State's Department of Telecommunication and Cable under their regulation CMR 3.07. It spells out a process which is fairly formal. There must be a newspaper ad announcing to the general public that a change is being sought. Coinciding with the ad, a report on the amendment must be published, the full text must be identified, the purpose for, and a description on the probable impacts on consumers must be available for the public to review. After 14 days, after 14 days of which the ad is placed in the paper, a 21-day public comment period begins. The amendment then is adopted after that public comment period, if both the issuing authority, which in this case is the Board of Selectmen, and Selco agree on the terms of the change. Within 10 days of the adoption, a written report must be filed with the state specifying the reasons for the adoption. So, and Selco would like to have this completed by the end of the calendar year. The timetable is somewhat tight, but we believe it can be done. Just to now walk you through, and I think you have before you, the existing franchise agreement. The proposed changes, I'd like to just summarize briefly. There is a definitions section in the agreement. We did add a number of items to the definitions. Section 2 now denotes that we'd like to see the entity operated by a nonprofit. Section 3 establishes a new access designee. Section 4.5, which would be new, formally establishes the amendment to the agreement, and there are other miscellaneous changes referencing the new access designee throughout the preamble and the beginning section. The meat of the changes occur in Section 6 of the franchise agreement, and that section spells out the role of public access. Again, Section 6.1 announces that there'll be a new access designee. Section 6.2 is an amendment to reflect a new nonprofit designation. Section 6.3 provides a couple of changes. One provides language pertaining to high-definition programming that wasn't in the last agreement, something that Shrewsbury Media Connection has adopted at their expense. Section 4 states that the Board of Selectmen shall request an annual meeting with the new designee. Section 6.4 provides for a provision for rental of facilities. 6.4 continues, spells out, and this needs to be worked on a little bit further, but we need to have a process in which all the assets used by the existing SMC transfer from the municipal entity to the new nonprofit for their use. That might need a little bit of legal fine-tuning. Also in Section 6.4, we added language that if for some reason Selco would need to relocate Shrewsbury Media Connection from their existing facility at Parker Road, that Selco would be responsible for the cost of that move. We don't really see any need to do that. We don't have, that's not on our radar for any reason, but if that need arose, it would be on our dime, that expense. Section 6.5, that changes the funding mechanism. Currently, in the franchise agreement, it calls for 3% of video revenue, plus two full-time employees paid out of the Selco budget, a cable budget, plus all fringe benefits for all employees of the Shrewsbury Media Connection to be paid for. The proposed change provides for 4.5% of all video revenue to be paid to the nonprofit entity, of which 1/2 of 1% would be used for a rent placeholder. Under the federal statute, the maximum that a cable operator pays to a community, in most cases the money goes through the community, is 5% of video-only revenue. In Shrewsbury, Selco pays existing 3% to SMC, plus two employees, plus all the fringe benefit expenses, and in addition pays $800,000 to the town. So we are, you know, if we were to pay the 5%, it would be slightly less than $500,000 per year. We're paying $1,251,000 currently. We are proposing, Selco is, that the new funding mechanism be effective January 1 of 2017. We are also proposing that the new nonprofit designee formally assume control and oversight of the agency on January 1, 2019. And the reason for that delay is during our review process, it was uncovered, there was a lot of discussion about the impact on the pension for those existing municipal employees who would be removed from municipal status to a nonprofit status and its impact on their pension. So we looked into what pension options were available to the new entity, and I'll get into that in just a minute. Couple other points. You know, it spells out that the new designee shall fundraise to supplement any additional operational expenses that they might need, and in Section 610, it acknowledges that the existing Advisory Board, as it's run today, would cease to operate when a new designee comes into place. So let's talk a little bit about the pension implications for existing employees. In studying this issue with the Retirement Office, we uncovered that there is a pension benefit available to state and municipal employees whose jobs are eliminated. There are certain requirement, it's referred to as a termination benefit. There are certain requirements that must be met in order for the employees to be eligible to get the benefit. Primarily, it requires a 20-year service within the system. Two of the employees currently employed by SMC are close to 20 years, within two years of that service, and so there was a strong advocacy by the Advisory Board that if this pension benefit were available, that we delay the nonprofit status until such time as the two employees had the 20 years needed to exercise their rights to take it. There are other implications of the termination benefit, and one of which is there's a forever ban from taking another Massachusetts pension-eligible job. So once the employee options to take this, he or she cannot go back into the pension system, so it's a difficult decision. The benefit would be based on the average of the top five years' salary for the employee. The other issue that came up was one of a legal issue involving the conflict of interest statute or the ethics statute of the Commonwealth, and it was determined that employees subjected to Section 18 and 19, they're very limited in their ability to, as employees of the new nonprofit entity, to negotiate on behalf with the community once in their new role. We hired an employment lawyer who's very well-versed in the ethics statute, and we're in the process of walking through the programming coordinator so that he is well-aware of what his limitations are in terms of what he can and cannot do in the future. We think we have a workable plan, and that he'll be able to run the day-to-day operations of the new entity. However, he will not be in a position to negotiate on behalf of the entity, and that will have to be done by the Board members of the Advisory Committee. And again, legal will advise as we move forward. So in terms of the schedule for the proposed changes, we met on September 27. This evening, I've asked that you, we discussed this matter in a public setting, and that the Advisory Board have a chance to give you input on their concerns. On October 25, as per the regulation, I'd like to have a draft report available for your consideration. It's a report that needs to be issued by both Selco and the Board of Selectmen, voted on, after which, if approved, we will commence the public notice in the newspaper, copy be available to the town clerk, it'll be posted on the websites of the Board of Selectmen and Selco. And then we'll put that in the paper, hopefully by November 14. 21 days, or on November 14, the 21-day period would begin. It would end on December 6, and on December 13, the Board of Selectmen, I believe, has a regularly scheduled meeting, at which time Selco Commission would entertain the last meeting and take action on the proposed amendment if you see it as a viable option. I also gave to you this evening a copy of the proposed budget. A lot of time was spent putting this together. Maria Lemieux, who's a CPA and one of our Commission members, spent a lot of time working with me and the finance manager for Selco, and the budget shows what their funds would be at 4% and at 4.5%, and it also shows what their expenditures were in 2015. We feel at a 4.5% budget, 1/2 of 1% earmarked towards the rent, that there is adequate funding in place for the new nonprofit to operate. Moving forward and in closing, there's really three things that need to happen. Finalize this process on amending the franchise agreement. The new entity or the Advisory Board, in lieu of the new entity until such time as it's formally organized, needs to develop an agreement between the Board of Selectmen and themselves as to their operation, and bylaws need to be developed for the new entity. And Lou has spent some time working on that, and we have a draft copy, subject to change, available for inspection. Again, it's in draft format. It was taken from, I believe, two communities, Andover and Wellesley? Was that correct? Andover and Wellesley is the two.
A lot from the state of California, I wonder if it was, it was the first draft. I'm not a lawyer. Drew it up as I saw it. It needs to be reviewed by a lawyer and look that from a legal standpoint.
And, but there are bylaws available throughout the, simple bylaws available for all nonprofit. And again, we need to work towards final implementation of 1-1, 2019. So with that, I would give the floor back to...
Would you like to ask questions of Mr. Hill now, or have Mr. Swyand come up?
If I could, Mr. Hill. Michael, you've referenced a new entity or the Board repeatedly during this evening?
A new entity.
The new entity or the Board, the Advisory Board?
Yes.
What if they, are they any, are they, or any obligation to accept this opportunity?
The existing?
Yeah.
They're not formally organized, so they could say they don't like it, but it's really an agreement between the Board of Selectmen and the Selco Commission. Now that said, we had numerous meetings with two of their Advisory Board members who were in communication with the other Advisory Board members, and we feel, and I can't speak for them, that we've reached a reasonable point of compromise on how we would move forward.
Okay, but just to make sure I understand this, you still need this third party?
Right, yes.
Board of Selectmen can do what it wants to do, Selco can do what it wants to do. But at the end of the day, you need some group of people to constitute this new entity.
Correct.
And to accept those responsibilities.
Correct.
If one does not organically develop from within this room or within this town...
Right.
Do you propose going out and creating one on your own?
Well, the proposal, the draft proposal, you know, tonight I wanted to focus on the franchise agreement, but in terms of an agreement between the new entity and the Board of Selectmen, the draft proposal calls for the Board of Selectmen to appoint two members, and for the Advisory Board, or the new entity, to appoint four, and that the program manager be the fifth kind of, or the seventh member, so two, four, and one.
I understand that. It was a very complete briefing book you gave us, but at the end of the day, it strikes me that if this were to move forward...
Yeah.
You require this yet-to-be-identified group...
Yes.
...to form and actually then receive these obligations.
Right. That is correct.
Let me, just so I'm clear, not that I want to go this way. The Board could technically solicit proposals from competing groups on running public access, correct?
They could.
So...
It's not what we had in mind.
No, 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 and I'm not saying we should do that, but I think to Mr. Kane's point, if the current Advisory Board or Shrewsbury Media Connection organization, the members, don't want to do it, we do, we have the opportunity to do something else.
Yes, correct.
So it's not like all of a sudden, well, hopefully all of a sudden there wouldn't be something, but, okay. Before we go into anything else, because I'm sure we have questions, I'd like Mr. Swyand to come up and just make a brief presentation.
I'm not going to make a formal presentation. I just want to position the Advisory Board in terms of what we are and what we are not. SMC is actually two different groups. There's one group which is part of Selco, and that consists of the employees, the assets, the facilities, the accounting, the entire shop, if you will. The second group is the membership, and members have to sign an agreement that they will abide by certain membership rules in order to use the equipment or to be a producer. And this has gone on since 1983. It's a little bit like the Hotel California. You come in and you sign and you never leave because it's not a one-year membership, it's a forever membership, and there are even a set of bylaws and prescribes the membership in terms of if you're before 1993, you have additional privileges. Out of that membership comes the Advisory Board. The membership has an annual meeting, and they elect for two years Advisory Board members, seven people. The bylaw says that the membership is represented by the Advisory Board, and the Advisory Board is also advisory to the SMC manager and to the light commission. To make it very clear, the Advisory Board has no authority over any operations, any management. It has no fiduciary responsibility. I've been a member of the Advisory Board for five years, and I've never seen a set of financial statements. I've never seen a complete equipment list and all of the details around capital equipment. So I think that's very important when you talk about the Advisory Board making decisions and the like. There was loose oversight, but the good news is, I think that SMC was very well-run, and I think that in all that time, I've never seen anyone complain about the operations, the service, and I believe that you people have had a lot of interaction with the SMC staff, and they're fantastic people, and I want to make it clear that none of this reflects on them. They really have done a super job, and I think that the Advisory Board are producers, they are citizens, we're very interested in public access. I think also, and maybe Mike alluded to it, but we're at a transition point. Cable access TV is right now in a transition. It's a mature industry, and the future is the Internet, it's on-demand, high-speed streaming. I have a device at home called an Amazon Echo. I don't even know what to call it. I talk to it, I say, Alexa, play Chopin, and Alexa plays Chopin off of Amazon. There's all these new technologies coming out, and I like to think that we're not talking about for the future, public access TV, but public access communications. And so whatever we do, we need to look at what's happening from the technology and the finances to operate for the next 20 years, and not try to design a system for the last 20 years. So, that's kind of all I really wanted to say. I don't know if either one of my co-members here want to say anything. Nick, did you want to say something?
You can pull the chair and come up.
Yeah.
You can both pull the chair and come up.
That's the best thing to do, yeah.
The Commission wants to come up, the Commission can come up. Are you sure? No?
All right. So I'm not here just as an advisory member. I'm here also as a parent of a student who has been greatly benefited by the, by SMC and its scholarship, and who is now actually making all of us proud at University of Southern California in the multimedia section. So, we are here basically because even though we have been involved with multiple discussions over the last seven, eight months with the Selco Committee, we do have certain... over the last seven, eight months with the Selco committee, we do have certain concerns which still remain unanswered, and the pathways need to be carved out. So with that, I would stop here until we discuss further.
Do you, can I, do you have a list of those concerns that we could get, not necessarily tonight, but we could get so we could take a look at them?
Sure. Sure. We don't have a list one by one typed up and developed, but we surely know what they are and can get them to you without a problem.
Sure.
I think one of our biggest issues is around employees. We're doing this after 20 years of employment with the town, and so we are very concerned that the employees are not the victims, if you will. We agree that it's probably a good idea to look at the organization and perhaps come up with a new organization for the future. It's in the details of that. I heard mentioned that the advisory board would negotiate. We've looked at these three documents, we've given feedback on them. Essentially, that feedback, some of it was implemented, some of it wasn't. We feel like we've done our due diligence. We're not going to be the new board of directors, maybe some will, some won't. But it's the new board of directors that has to sign off on it. So we can put down clauses that we'd like to see, and you hand it to the new board, as you said, Mr. Kane, and they look at it, and our very first suggestion gets thrown out as something they don't want. So it's important to look at who has to sign off on this new corporation, on this new agreement. And so I think that's an important consideration. For example, the three-way agreement that I see it right now, it's very unspecific. I don't think that, I certainly wouldn't as a new board member, sign it. Essentially, you're asking people to provide services for whole categories such as town meetings and all the rest, no quantitative statement, and yet you are supposed to operate at a certain financial level. The budget that Selco presented, I think, is inadequate to operate at the level that we are now. Last year's budget, according to the town report for 2015, was $501,000. The year before that, it was 464. I don't have numbers for this year yet. Again, as I mentioned earlier, we've never seen any kind of financial reports on actuals or month-by-month budget versus actuals, but let's say that it's coming in at about The proposal that you saw with Selco is $400,000. That's a 20% cut roughly, and if you know a way to provide the same level of services for 20% more, good luck.
Okay. Nick, do you have anything you want to add?
Yeah, I just, I just want to support some of the things that Lou had said, but in the primary thing being that the employees are our primary concern, that they are treated with the concern that they're, that they're, they're due. We want to make sure that, for instance, if you look forward to a new entity that Mr. Hale is recommending, proposing, I'm not sure whether or not the benefits package in terms of the startup organization would be anywhere near what the town offers today to these employees. So that would be a primary concern, you know, one of my main concerns. I think that the employees that have been there, you know, during my tenure of working there with the, with all the athletics that I've done in town for the last 18 years with my crew and the various producers that I've worked with over the years down there. The staff does an admirable job, and I don't need to tell you guys that. You all, you all recognize that, you know that.
There may be one person in town that doesn't know that you've produced, what, over 1,000 programs?
It's not about me.
No, no, but he goes, he goes way back. I've produced over 84 programs. My wife and I do a program called Arts and Ideas, and Namorana has been involved in a number of programs. So, yeah, we are all producers here.
My, my concern is that, you know, I just want to make sure these, these people that have been down there, that I've called on all hours of the day, I've called some of the employees down there at obscene hours in the morning, at 5:00 in the morning, asking to open up the studio, and they've come in on their own free time over the, over a number of years. And I don't know if the people at home that are turning on their channels to Channel 28, 328, 29, all of the free town channels, recognize the behind-the-scenes work that goes into running a television program. And I just want to make sure that we're doing the right, that we do the right thing, because I would, I really hate to mess this up after, because it offices Town of Shrewsbury so much more than a lot of the other towns receive in the area. And I hope the residents recognize that as well, how fortunate we are to have such a good, a good thing in Shrewsbury. If you look at, if you look at the various communities in the state, I know that Shrewsbury is recognized as one of the forefront communities of bringing high-definition to, to public access and this type of channeling. It was one of the first communities to do that, and that was done under the leadership of Bill Naye, who's not long, isn't here any longer, but we still have the staff that's there. And just, just want to, I just want to reiterate that, you know, it's, I want to make sure that the employees are taken care of, and that's my primary concern, among others.
I have a few things. So just to summarize what we are trying to say, the most important points that we have are first and foremost, the employees, given the ethics issue and the conflict of interest issue. We want to make, from our side, we want to make every honest effort that the employees, current employees, are given complete assurance in the form of a waiver that they will not be punished or prohibited for going to the nonprofit entity afterwards. And that's something we definitely request that we have in writing, because we may not be there, Mike may not be there, some of us might be around, and so we just want to make sure of that. And we have few things in process, but we all know that things can be interpreted differently in the court of law. So today, the documents that we are running with the current attorneys are, they still have so much gray zone that it is subject to interpretation. And so we just want to make sure that in no way we can make injustice to these people. The second thing is that we need to have a back, backup plan for the shortfall for the budget, because when we talk in terms of percentage amount of revenue going to the entity, we are forgetting that the percentage amounts may not equilibrate with the total amount that is needed to run the entity. And as we all know, there's a certain amount that is always going to be necessary to run the entity. We understand that we can apply for grants and things like that, but again, high school gets prolific service from this entity, the Board of Selectmen, the town, everyone gets a lot of service from this entity. It's such an asset that we should not lose it just because we cannot keep up with it. It's, Shrewsbury is a very upcoming town, pretty famous in the state of Massachusetts, if not beyond. And so if we can keep up our nose up there and make everyone proud and actually walk the walk along with changing times, all the citizens will be very happy. So that is another thing. The third thing I want to include here is that we're talking of rent going forward. Currently, if this entity is serving the town, the Board of Selectmen, maybe the town can make a provision that this entity will be either provided with a physical space that they will not be charged for, or otherwise, if they are going to rent, then there has to be room for inflation, just like every other rent that we have, we have that provision, which is not in the current budget. And one more thing is that we definitely want to make sure that there is a public hearing on these issues. Thank you.
Okay. Okay. Mr. Hale, I have a couple of questions.
Could I just respond to a couple of things before?
Sure.
I think it's important to keep in mind what the federal regulation is, and that's 5% of video revenue goes to the town for its decision in most cases as to how to allocate those funds. Most communities allocate a great portion of that to public access. Our proposal is to maintain 800,000 for the town and also give four and a half percent, which would be greater than any other community in the state. So I think it's important to keep that in mind as we're under great pressure to keep rates as low as we can with the tremendous pressure we're under from programming cost increases and the, the negative publicity and feedback we get as a result of those. We would like to give everybody as much as we can, but it's a zero-sum game, and there's only so much around. And I think our proposal is fair at 1.25 million versus 500,000, which would be allowed for under the federal regulation. The other thing I'd like to say is that I agree with almost everything Lou said, but I, and as well as the others, it's just that, to Nick's point, when I first started in 2011, 2012, the idea of having high-definition TV for public access was brought to my attention from the then-manager, Bill Naye. And I said, let's take a step back here. There were only two other communities, I think, New York City and Palo Alto, California, who had it. And I said, is this really something that Shrewsbury should be considering? So I asked that Bill bring it before the Shrewsbury, before the Selco Commission to present it, and the outcome of that discussion and presentation was that Selco doesn't really have the ability to veto or deny that expense. Those funds are given to SMC under the franchise agreement, the 3% plus the employees, for them to determine how they best want to spend them. There's no controls on those monies. And so that's another reason which brings us before you tonight, is to establish a process, an entity that can have that type of oversight and controls in place for policy decisions like that. So even if the commission didn't agree with proceeding with the high-definition request, which was over $100,000, I believe, then we had to let it go. So, I mean, that's why we're, one of the reasons we're here tonight.
I think we're not in disagreement that there ought to be a separation between Selco and SMC. Ideally, it hap, what should have happened 30 years ago. Part of the problem is we've got 20-year employees, so that's an issue. The other thing is, it is a matter of management, and as I said earlier, the advisory board has not been managing SMC. It's been essentially either managing itself or managing itself with some benign neglect from Selco. They're all Selco employees, it's a Selco accounts, it's a Selco facility, the equipment's on Selco books. So if you're looking to the advisory board, we've got to restructure anyway, because we don't manage.
I just want to point out one thing. When we had the discussion, the, all the discussions and the written documents we were provided with were the talk of 4% or 4.5%. We never received any documents that said 5%. In the proposal you put forward tonight, you talked about 5%. So that's just a little documents, maybe we didn't receive those.
I didn't put a proposal forward to 5% for SMC. I'm saying the federal regulation for the town is a maximum of 5% for all payments.
Yeah.
So no other, excuse me, Namorana, but if there were a private cable operator in this community, that would be the max, and there's a provision in the contract in the existing franchise agreement, should another private cable operator come into town, that Selco would follow the payment of what the private entity would pay. So that money is, in essence, go away.
So the point is, it's not just limited to Selco. The point I'm trying to make to the Board of Selectmen is that this particular entity, which is such a valuable resource to the town, if from whatever amount comes out of Selco's budget and goes to this new entity, we need to have, as a town, we need to have a backup plan where the shortfall is going to be covered, because not always we get grants, not always there's going to be a successful fundraiser. We're assuming here that there are going to be people in town who are going to have time to do fundraisers. We all know that every single day, I get like 50 requests for donations. It's like we all cannot continue to pay in every place. So all I'm requesting is that to run the same quality program. And today, we are in HD, we're going to 4K already, and there's going to be many more transitions those will be coming. So just like how we did a wonderful job with the public library, impressive place, it's not just a structure anymore, everyone's raving about it, we need to do equally good, if not better, job with the new entity.
We have facts around cost. In 2014, it was 464,000. In 2015, it was 501. I think it will come into something like 480, again, depending on how much you put into a cash reserve for future capital equipment requests, which is being neglected and really, from an accounting standpoint, needs to be revised, in our opinion. However, at 500,000, I've asked Mark to give me an estimate for what it would cost to give you the same level of service with a new entity, and he came up with a number of 520,000. So the fact of the matter is, if you like the services you get, and I assume that from every corner we hear, we love what SMC is doing, it's approximately a $500,000 a year operation. Selco is showing a budget that shows you getting $400,000. That's a 20% cut. You can play around with percentages, but when it comes down to paying the bill, they want dollars, not percentages. So that's the dilemma. You've got $800,000 coming in from Selco, and it's going directly to the town. SMC needs $500,000 to deliver the same services. And the employee problem, those are the two big issues, quite frankly. Along with what's happening from a technological standpoint, for the last two or three years, there's been a drop in subscribers, and I think you're doing some sort of a study right now.
Yeah.
So I don't feel like the future is going to be a big increase in subscribers. So we need to deal with, how do we communicate? And as I say, there's new communication methods. I like to think of it as public access communications, not public access TV, because back in business school 101, you know, the old story of the buggy whip manufacturers versus the transportation accessory manufacturer. I won't go into it, but if you see me offline, it's in business 101 in the first week in school.
Okay.
So really, this is the essence of the difficulty, if you will.
Well, just one more point to it also, as I just, as I look around the audience here, the people that are here tonight that are here to support Mark and his staff down at SMC, I've personally reminded that, you know, a lot of the people that are here, the hours that these people put in at SMC during the course of the year, these are people that are residents of Shrewsbury, people that are brought in from outside of Shrewsbury to help do it, to help manage. You know, we're talking, how many employees at SMC? Three, two full-time employees and a couple of part-timers, I believe it is, something like this.
Three part-timers and four full-timers.
Plus, you have an army of volunteers that help run that, that entity down there the way it is now. I think it does a pretty good job of manning the cameras at town meeting or at, doing the football games or the music that you see on or churches or all the different venues that SMC covers. So that goes a long way. It's the town residents that are making this thing work, and it's not just the employees.
I just want to be clear, I think I speak for the board. I don't think there's any question about the quality and the commitment of the people at Shrewsbury Media Connection. The employees, no, or the commission.
We have a great product. Other towns come to look at what we're doing here. Other towns come to look at what we're doing here, quite frankly.
Well, I, so I don't think that there's a question, the quality of the people who were there, the quality of the volunteers, that goes without question. I'd like to jump away from the budget for a little bit. Mr. Hill, the reason you're looking for January 1st is because your fiscal year, Selco's fiscal year, starts on January 1st, correct?
Correct.
Okay. What is the size of the, whatever you call it, the capital account right now?
Oh, it's close, it's about 350,000.
Okay.
I'm going to jump in here. We just recently looked at the present-day replacement cost of the capital equipment we have, and it was approximately 475,000.
Excuse me. Okay. I just want this, so there is a fund that would go, okay. The termination benefit, that's avail, at 20 years, that's available to an employee who's, of the entity that's terminated, correct?
Correct.
Okay. Do they have to take advantage of that term? If they don't take advantage of the termination, and I'm not suggesting that they go find another job in another public entity, but they can go to work for another public entity, right? And just take their retirement at whatever the retirement age is, 60, whatever.
Correct. They could transfer.
Okay. It's the termination benefit and what we're concerned about and everybody's concerned about, that they can get to the 20 years to take advantage of that if that's what they want to do.
Correct.
Okay.
May I interrupt you for a second? But they cannot go for, technically, as it stands right now, they cannot go for the non-profit without the waiver.
Without the what?
Without losing their benefits, correct?
If it went to nonprofit as of like the 1-1, 2017, which is why we need to wait till 1-1, 2019.
But that's just, I just want to point out again.
But we're talking about waiting until they get to the 20 years.
Right. One employee has 18 years, the other has 19 years.
Right.
2019 is the beginning of.
Right. And that's what has been proposed. And then, October 25th, when this, if this got published then, does that mean that the Board and Selco have to be in agreement on the franchise amendment?
She says that we shall issue a joint report. It doesn't speak to agreement or disagreement.
Well, I mean, I don't, I don't know where the Board as a whole stands.
Right.
But if we're not in complete agreement, how can you publish?
We can't.
Not, what?
We delay.
Okay. What goes out is what the agreement is proposed to be.
Correct.
After the comment period, theoretically, you could go back to the table because of comments that were heard by everybody and say, "Wait a minute, we should change it this way. We have to start the process all over again," right?
Correct. Well, I don't think, no, you could make modifications based on the comments.
On the, based on the comments?
Yeah.
Okay. All right. Anybody question, comments?
Just a clarification. I realize that you mentioned that there were four considerations kind of going forward. I didn't particularly understand the part that you said, a waiver that will be in place that will not prohibit someone from going to the nonprofit side. Could that be explained a little bit better? Maybe I'm.
I think I, I think I can. The ethics law is very specific on what people in the public sector can do when they go to work for, they can't negotiate for a business that they're going to, basically. And so they need to be careful. And then they can't, they can't be involved with the negotiations going forward because it's a perceived conflict. And one of the things that, that Selco did was, when this issue came up, was talk to, actually, the firm that we use for Town Council and ask them to research it to make sure that it wasn't a lot of unintended consequences. And we agreed to do this and all of a sudden find out that these two employees that we're talking about specifically, all of a sudden can't work for this at all and they'd be out of a job. So that's what that was all about. And we're almost there in terms of clarification and approval or agreement, whatever, from the Ethics Commission, correct?
The Ethics Commission signed off on the attorney's statement stating that they were in agreement with the findings and recommendation of our attorney, of the attorneys representing the employees that we paid for.
Right. Okay.
Recently, as in the last few days.
Okay.
Now, subsequent to that, because, you know, to the point of the SMC advisory members, this isn't, obviously not something that these employees voluntarily wanted to do. In the case of many, the statute's set up so that you don't leave your municipal job and then go to work in the private sector and then lobby against to gain insight. That didn't happen here. These people are being transferred and, for the lack of a better word, I wouldn't call them victims, but the unintended consequences are that the statute's in place and it would put them under the umbrella of these regulations in an unintended way. I've asked, and I spoke to an attorney there today, is there any way that there can be a waiver for this? The attorney I spoke to said, "There's never been a waiver in her tenure at the Ethics Commission, but that she would bring it before the General Counsel for further review."
But they can't go to work where there's nonprofit that's getting money from.
Yes, but they can't have a seat at the table in negotiating with the future Board of Selectmen.
If I may interject, it is very difficult for the current board or the new board that will be coming in place to actually make these financial decisions without talking to currently Mark, who is the manager and who knows how the operations run and where the monies are needed and how many employees are needed. And so I understand directly, he cannot be involved in all these negotiations, but even to make the new entity successfully survive in its initiation period, there needs to be some back-and-forth dialogue there. And so I think we need to protect him and the other two employees, particularly by name, just so that we create an entity that survives. Because our purpose, and that's why Mike and we, us, had meetings together, the whole committee, to make sure how we get there. And so that is one of the asks we have, just to make sure that all the employees are protected.
Right. And that's what we're talking about.
I think that we're doing everything we can to get to that. That being said, the statute is, or the regulation is specific and it spells out in the lawyer's opinion that they can carry on their day-to-day functions. And Mark can do his day-to-day functions of budget prep and the like, but he can't negotiate the terms and conditions of any agreements between the board.
There's the dilemma. The Advisory Board is not the new Board of Directors, so we can negotiate, but the new Board of Directors is the one that has to sign the agreement. And so, you know, to what level do we want to keep negotiating back and forth for something that we aren't going to eventually sign?
Mr. Chairman, why don't you become the board? You guys seem to care about the thing.
Well, you have to create a new corporation. We could do that, okay, if people would be willing to do that. I have no great desire to serve on this new board. I would do that as, and I don't think too many of the Advisory Board members do. I would do it to facilitate a good transfer and then get out at some future point, if that would be acceptable to people. But, but yeah, you need to get to that new Board of Directors to sign any kind of an agreement that's going to hold up. The Advisory Board has no authority whatsoever. Even if we had authority over the entire operation, we're the old operation, not the new, not the new corporation.
But you could be the new corporation.
Well, that, that's a topic for another discussion.
Mr. Melton?
So, yeah, so I'd just like to weigh in a little bit. I am the board member, the selectman who participated in some of the discussions here. So, so first of all, I guess I want to reiterate what was said that in every aspect of the discussions that went on, the employees were at the forefront of all of the decisions that were made. And that, you know, the decision by the Selco Commission to defer the actual implementation until 1-1, 2019 is a direct result of that, of the understanding of, as we've talked about, the retirement clause. And it gets complicated. So I think we're going to have to have, I'm excuse me, the termination clause. So, you know, there's going to be some settling here and some understanding of what all this means. But I think what you're hearing here collectively is the importance of, importance of the board. This new board really will play a key role, an active role. And that became even more vital with this ethics law regulation that has, that comes to play. And because the director will not be able to have an active role in advising about the entity and any negotiations, I think we need to be very thoughtful. I think Lou speaks very wisely about that. I think there may be members of the current advisory committee who may want a role in that. But I think that new board needs to be a nonprofit board. We need to be thinking about this now, going from an advisory to a board that actually is going to run a nonprofit operation. Very different. Some of us work in nonprofits, we work with nonprofits. We're talking about people who understand not only nonprofit entities, but how to run the business. I see a financial, you know, somebody has to have a financial interest, you know? So I think it's going to be critical. And if the entity, if the new board is seven people or five people or however many the selectmen appoint and whoever appoints, you know, that's the logistics. But I think that is going to be vital to, to the success and to answering a lot of these questions.
They are going to have fiduciary responsibility for this whole operation. It's a serious job.
But it will operate. Again, I think we have to know that at some point, the line, you know, so what we're, what we're doing now is we're trying to tighten as much as possible all those strings, all those areas, to make as smooth of a transition as we can, to certainly keep the employees as whole as possible. And then what we're hearing is trying to keep the operation as whole as possible. And I think we'll be able to do that to a certain extent. But there also has to be a realization that this is going to be a separate entity. It's going to run its own nonprofit business. And at some point, that the Selco obligation, we need it to be fair. I would like to see if we can get it. I've seen numbers, I've seen the numbers. But I think for everybody else, we need to see more detailed numbers that spell out, you know, what was the budget in '14? What was actually spent? What was the budget in '15? What was actually spent? '16 actually spent? And then, you know, compare that to the budget. I think there's an excellent budget that's been put together that has taken into consideration every possible component of what it would take to run the operation. And we will go back and forth on what that means. But, but I think at the end of the day, there's going to be a number. And then that's the number that the entity is going to have to operate under moving forward as, as a separate nonprofit, so.
Let me put on my venture capitalist hat, okay? You're bringing a new corporation to a venture capitalist. What is he going to ask you? He's going to ask you for a three-year pro forma set of financials, profit, loss, budget, capital equipment, all the rest of that. We don't have that right now. I haven't seen, there's been some discussion as to how much capital equipment we presently own. What is the replacement cycle? I, off the top of my head, back of envelope, if we have $450,000 worth of capital equipment right now, present value, again, top of my head, the replacement cycle, 10 years average? Okay? Well, that means you need to be putting aside $47,000 a year for capital equipment replacement. That has not been done in the past. They've taken whatever's been left over in the budget and thrown it into something called a depreciation fund, which is in fact actually a cash reserve fund for future capital equipment purchases. So you've got to take a really close look at the capital equipment the next 10 years and what is it going to take in the way of budgeting each year? Simple math is $47,000 a year. Maybe you can shave that down. That has not been done in the past and I don't think it's been adequately considered in the numbers that I've been given. So there's a lot of loose ends on this thing yet, folks.
And I think unfortunately, I don't know where we're going to end up with this as a board with the agreement. But unfortunately, until we get a nonprofit or, it could be a for-profit, the way it's set up is a nonprofit, until we get an entity to actually sit down and work with, there's going to be a lot of loose ends. I mean, we, this is change. And change has a lot of uncertainty in it.
There needs to be a transition timetable, how this thing is going to fit in.
Right.
When do you form the board? When do you design a set of financials with the new board agreeing with everybody who's involved here? What those numbers should be?
I think, I think it's important to note, though, that the agreement that we're talking about this evening is, or an amendment to the agreement, is between the board as the licensor and Selco as the licensee.
Franchise agreement.
That's, that's it.
Yes.
The discussions, we need to be aware, and certainly that's what a lot of discussions about, is about what's going to happen to public access. We need to be aware of that. But, and we wanted your input. That's why we asked everybody here. And that's why we're going to have a public hearing at some point in the future. We're going to, we're going to have to establish a date on that. But there will then be a discussion, if this goes through in whatever form, then there will be a discussion about, with whoever the people are who decide they want to work towards forming this nonprofit. Now, the Advisory Board may decide they don't want to be on the nonprofit, but they will work, or somebody at Shrewsbury Media Connection will work towards creating the nonprofit, work with the Board of Selectmen to come up with that. And then, I mean, those discussions will take place at that time. But I think we do need to be aware that we're constrained as licensors of what we can ask Selco to provide, or what, let me phrase that, require Selco to provide. And Selco does not have to provide more than 5%. That's, that's a given. That's federal law, whether we like it or not. That's it. And it can only come, at the present time, the way federal law is, as I understand it, it can only come from cable revenues.
Video.
It can't come from anything else. Video.
My understanding is that they can give you more than the 5% they're not required to under federal law.
And they, and they don't have to.
Mr. Chairman, may I ask a follow-up on your point? If you took 20 miles around Shrewsbury and, and looked at how much funding goes from Selco or the system to Shrewsbury Media Cable and compared it to other communities, what's the general relationship?
Well, I, I would think that it's not more than 5%. So municipalities other than the city of Worcester, I'd say it's double.
Double.
Or more.
That might be interesting to have someone on your staff just run to ground factually west of Boston, just so we could get a sense for that. Listening here and I'm almost feeling as though we're in the February budget meetings where the departments are saying what they would like and how life could be perfect with a dedicated fund for capital replacement, et cetera. And the town manager is at this end, trying to say, within the confines of where we find ourselves, we think this is a reasonable outcome. I will tell you, when I talk to people around SPAC, excuse me, when I talk to people around town, there is a very high level of interest in SPAC, Shrewsbury Media Cable, whatever you want to call it, amongst those who are involved and interested in it. I think tonight, if someone had said, "Who will be in the audience?" I think I'd get 80% of the faces and names, to be honest with you. Because amongst those who care about this function of the Selco operation, it's, it runs high, it's deep, the commitment is there, all those great things. Amongst another group in town, I don't even know that they know it exists. It's those three channels, if you will. So, though I understand why you're passionately arguing and I agree. So, so I understand why you're passionately arguing, and I agree with, and I appreciate the passion that you're showing for this. At the end of the day, in my mind, it comes down to the same decisions we make at town meeting. And that is, you try to cut what you think is the most reasonable deal across the board. And though you'd like a perfectly funded capital reinvestment account, I'm sure the fire chief would too. I'm sure John Knight might like that as well at the highway department. I don't know if that's actually reasonable as we step forward. But we'll give it a look. I happen to believe this proposal is, within my understanding of the world, a reasonable one. I'm interested in hearing from others who have a different perspective, because I may be missing something. But when I see the level of commitment the community has made through the cable system to SPAC, as I call it, I, I think that's a clear commitment, but it's a commitment that is heads and shoulders above others. You know, on a more personal note, I always find it odd that we just can't get push-button mics for town meetings, so you know when you're actually on. And yet, we could, in my opinion, make a borderline irresponsible expenditure and buy high def so everybody can see how bad my skin is. I just, I don't see those things really being consistent with this town's approach to spending. But I look forward to the comment period and the public hearing.
Can I answer that too? Oh, go ahead, Ms. Miller.
I, I just, anecdotally, I think that, you know, when you're not, we operate as a nonprofit as well. You know, we're not in this to make money. When your rates are lower, the percentage of revenue available for this is lower. So when you compare other towns, it may be disparate in that if Comcast is charging more for the programming, there's more money in the 5% available for distribution.
Maybe dovetail that, I would say, there is a difference between, yeah, Comcast isn't as concerned with keeping consumer rates low. And they aren't.
They have to respond to their customers and their shareholders.
Well, right, exactly, right. So you have, so you have the balance also in there of an entity that is, the expectation from the community is that you keep the rates low. So it's not just turning around and charging more over here for the consumer. You know, it just doesn't work that way in, in our model. I would also point out, I guess, to some of Mr. Kane's comments too, is that the proposal here is that the funding mechanism would become effective 1-1-17. But the actual agreement would not become effective until 1-1-19 for reasons that we've discussed already. So there is a period of time there that they actually would be working under the proposed funding. And I don't know if that's something to consider, if, if there is, if, you know, do we, do we iron all of that out before the 1-1? Or will we have some period of time to work with it, to kind of understand it? And then modify it, should we need, within the period between, I don't know, I'm throwing that out. I don't know if that's doable or not doable, but I could, I'm, could have darts being thrown at me right now, but.
I still have.
My opinion is that if we're gonna do it for that two years and work under this budget, it's the perfect round to see if it's, if this is actually gonna work.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying, that's exactly what I'm saying. So, okay, so, all right, so.
I think trying to go to the new corporation.
If, if, if we sign the agreement and say, this is the way we're going, that, yeah, we have two years to see if it's gonna work, but then we've already got a commitment, we've already got a license that says we're going to do X, or we're gonna get X number of dollars. In order to change that, if we found out it wasn't gonna work the way it was, for whatever reason. What?
We'd have to go through this all over again.
Exactly. Right? I mean, that's my impression.
Well, I, I actually think that the budget's gonna work, but.
Well, I'm, I'm not, I'm not saying it is or it isn't, I'm just saying, I mean, to say that we can use the next two years as a trial period is kinda difficult if we're saying we're gonna change the funding mechanism on January 1st. I personally, I still have doubts that we can iron everything out and get this done before January 1st. That's my own opinion. I, I could be wrong. There are, there are phases to this. The first one is to change the agreement, and then the next one is to work with the nonprofit. I think there's a lot of questions that, that we've all talked about over time, Michael, you and I have talked about, that we all need some clarity on, and I think this is what Mrs. Miller was saying, about really what's gonna happen when we go to this nonprofit entity in terms of practically what's gonna happen. So, I don't, I, I, I'm not comfortable at this point that we're gonna make a January 1st date. I just, that's my own opinion, the rest of us might have a different opinion.
The only issue we need to resolve by January 1st is the franchise agreement. The negotiation with the nonprofit does not need to be finalized. And of the 351 communities in the state, if they have non, if they have a public access entity, there's gotta be at least 340 of them out there already in operation. So we're not reinventing the wheel.
Right.
We're going to the conventional model as opposed to the unconventional model.
But, but I think that, and I, I wasn't part of the discussion in 1983. But I think 1983, 1988, there was a decision made that Shrewsbury Public Access was maybe gonna be different than everybody else, that we, that we had different intentions. And I think that's why, at the time, it was so generous. Because we wanted to do something different, that, you know, we, we set up the, we set up the studio. So, I think, and I know times change. Look, I, I've been in situations in business where things change. I mean, that's life, I understand that. But I think way back when, there was, there was a decision made to do it this way. And now we're grappling with, how do we provide the same service but do it that way? And that's not good, it's not bad, it just is, it's different. We're taking a little bit of a different mindset than what was happening in 1983, I think.
You may be right. I'm not sure that in 1983, the vision was to have a different public access. I know that could be true, I don't know. But I know that the vision was to have a different cable operation. And that cable operation was granted to the town or to Selco, Shrewsbury Electric Light Plant, as a means on the heels of the implementation of Proposition 2 and 1/2 in 1981, the town took a serious revenue hit. And the thought was at the time in 83, that they could recover some of those lost revenues through operating the cable franchise as a municipal operation and provide certain, what otherwise would be profit, to go into the town's general fund for municipal operation. I think that was the thought. I'm not sure about the public access.
You could be right. I mean, that, Proposition 2 and 1/2 certainly must have played into that. But I, that, that decision to not go to the nonprofit model tells me that somebody thought they wanted that system run differently. That's.
I think it was a control issue.
Well, they want to go to the nonprofit model, but they still wanted to not completely divorce it.
We don't know, you know, whatever. This is giving more control back to the nonprofit.
Right, right.
I think it was an issue of more control and so, you know, whatever, we can second guess what they were trying to do in 83. But, but, you know, here today and.
All right, so.
The problem I see with going ahead with the franchise agreement is if you set the percentage, and let's just say for the sake of talking, 4%, now you've locked in the new corporation at a certain delivery level, which I think we should at least sort that out. Because I'm hearing $400,000 is what the light commission thinks we can do it for. And I'm hearing the SMC manager tell me 500,000. And I look back at the last two years and I see 501 and 464. I don't think we have agreement as to how much it takes. So if you set that franchise agreement at 4%, you've locked in the delivery service you're gonna get, which may not be the same.
No, I, again, you keep throwing that number out there, but every time you throw that number out there, you're including capital expenditures, which doesn't really fit into the fixed costs of the, because those, those can change on an annual basis. Like, you have to depend on how much money you have and before you make a capital improvement. And yes, there is a reserve and this actual catch that's going to them as of 1-1-19. If they choose to use that for capital expenditures, and they choose to use that for capital expenditures, what this budget should include is to cover the cost of operating it and covering the cost of their fixed costs.
Well, see, there's where I disagree. If you don't budget for capital expenditures, eventually you run, run your.
We're not, we're not gonna solve that, we're not gonna solve that today.
We won't solve that tonight, but one anecdotal point, Mr. Chairman. In, in 2015, the 3% video revenue that was granted to SMC to operate amounted to $293,000. Out of that money that was given to them, they spent $207,400. So a net amount went into their reserve. In 2014, based on the 3%, their amount of, was $261,500. They spent $178,300. Again, $83,000 went to their reserves. So in the last two years, they've operated well within the amount of money that has been.
Well, see, I'd like to see it reconciled with the town.
Hold on for a second, let me just, I just wanna be sure I'm clear. Does that include, that 3% does not include the, the two or three town employees, right?
Correct, that doesn't.
So that's another, roughly, throw a number at, another $150,000?
Yes.
Okay.
160, 170.
That's what's in the budget.
Right, right, I understand. I just wanna make sure when you said they were operating in 201. Okay. So where do we go, I don't, I'm, I'm not clear where do we go from here?
So I think the next step, that I have to prepare a report for your review to put, you know, and come back on the 25th. And if you had, you know, get it to you in advance of that for your review. And then we, then you would sign off on it, we'd sign off on it. And then it would be advertised in the telegram that we'd like to make this change. And then 14 days after that advertisement, the 21-day comment period begins.
So if members of the board have questions.
They can come to me.
Before, we, we should get them to you?
Yeah.
So that.
Through Christine or directly.
Okay. Before the 25th, so if there's something in there that potentially would change.
Right, so there's expected that we will have a vote on it, or an agreement, or whether, you know, on the 25th.
Would we get to say that?
To move it forward as a report, we're not saying, as a report. Which then kicks off the next phase, which is the public.
The public comment.
Comment phase.
And then.
Which would include a public hearing.
I would say that's when we would have it.
And then, then from there, we can modify, we could, or whatever, with the goal and the aim being agreement to be effective 1-1. But, well, it would actually go into effect 1-1-19, but whatever. But to make the decision by the end of the year so that they can begin the funding mechanism for 17. So we are in a very tight window.
Right.
So I just wanna make it clear to the board, the expectation would be that we are acting on something that, that is a report, that we're saying as of that period in time, that report, we're willing to move forward to kick off the public feedback stage, so.
Okay, so may I just ask a follow-up?
Is that correct, Mr. Hale? Please don't, yeah, okay.
Okay. I just wanna make sure, because you outlined a very complete thoughtful process of, so if we vote to do something on the 25th.
It was a moment of.
It was a good one, it was a good.
Clarity.
We're not, we're saying, great, this is what we're going to then hear input on.
Right.
And then at some point, we take a confirmatory vote?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, I just wanna make sure I understand the ground rules.
Or, and/or make adjustments based on the comments.
That's fine, that's fine, I just wanna make sure I understand the.
Yeah.
Because I, I must tell you, I don't, I don't focus on this a lot, so I wanna hear what people have to say. I'm not as close to it as these folks who use the services. So I just wanna make sure that what you've outlined is what, because that sounds like a reasonable way to proceed, Moira.
Do we, as a board, get to see that copy as well? Because if we are acting on behalf of the manager currently.
It's a public document, yeah, everyone will see it at that point.
Yes.
But that's after.
So 25th, it gets, we would vote to put it out, right? We're voting to put out the report for public comment, so on the 25th, everybody has access to it.
But shouldn't we, as the advisory board, also be allowed to look at it at least once before? Because otherwise, as public, yes, of course we will. But if we're acting on behalf of Mark, and since we have been involved in all these discussions, it will be only prudent that we also get a copy of that report beforehand?
But isn't the report just telling you everything that we've just discussed?
Yeah, but it's nice to see it in writing.
Well, we have a draft, well, you don't have a draft yet. But the draft is, isn't this the draft of it?
I have to highlight each change.
I understand, but the document that would become the report is based on what we have right here.
Correct.
And anybody can see that right now, right?
Correct.
Okay, so you can have, you can.
They have that.
The whole thing?
The three documents that are of, in, on play.
I don't think it's unreasonable, whatever you put together is the final that we're gonna look at, the 25th. They can see it too.
But they might not have, we might, we might not have that final document really far in advance of the 25th, so they can get the same.
Well, then they'll get, they'll have the exact same point in time we have it, yeah.
I don't have a problem with that. You have a problem with that?
That's true.
Okay.
I'm as transparent as you can.
Yeah, I mean.
Again, we're advisory, we're happy to advise you.
But it's all in here, I think Mr. Paul's point is, there shouldn't be anything gotten here, but.
Right.
We're, we're happy, change is good, change always brings something positive. So we're on board with it, we don't have any, we just want to make sure what we are supposed to do put a fair and square representation, and that's what we're trying to do.
Right. And, and, and I think that we're all concerned, that we wanna make sure that we make a decision that two years down the road, we, we don't regret, so.
And we are.
I mean, everybody wants to put their due diligence into it, so.
And thank you for that.
Anyways, um, thank you for coming in. And thank you for all of you, I mean, it's really, the only other time we have this many people is when we have a dog hearing, so this is really. But, you know, and when the, when the comment period comes up, certainly, all of you, if you have comments, should send them in. That's what the comment period is for. And then we will have a public hearing and, and, I mean, you'll, we'll get that date to you as soon as we can figure out when it will be. Okay?
May I make a suggestion that you have the commission and the advisory board, and through the advisory board, Mark, take these two different budgets and meld them together? Because we've got $100,000 difference in the two.
Well, I don't, I don't think.
That's the money that greases the road.
I don't think Mark can do it. We can, we can talk about that.
You can put it under the 2017, he can work on a 2017 budget.
I don't, but I don't think we negotiate, we can negotiate it back and forth, not with Mark.
I think it's important to acknowledge the finding that we're providing more revenue than any other entity that this consultant has studied. That coupled with the fact that our rates are most lower than any other, the two don't work. There's an inherent conflict in low rates and high payment outside the general services provided by the organization.
Well, let's end it, because we've gone on for an hour and a half. We'll get back to you on the dates, we'll get back to you, folks, with a copy of what we're gonna see. And we'll go from there. Certainly send your comments in during the comment period. Thank you.